Not a whole lot of new changes to it, but I'm just gonna kind of just do an overview of it. And we can, we can kind of go through it if you have any specific questions as we're, as we're going for it. So just to highlight the document, I know board members that have been on here before, this is something that we have to do a hearing on and you all have to approve every single year. So this is the hearing and we have to have a whole month before you can approve it. So it's also posted on our website as well for people to be able to access and to take a look at. This is a requirement from New York State. Like I said, you will approve it at your August meeting. So first of all, some highlights of it, it really goes through our school safety team. I, we have a really strong school safety team. I know I've told you it in school safety updates, just how impressed we bring the whole community together for these meetings. So we have representatives from our law enforcement for emergency services. Of course, a whole bunch of district support as well on this committee. And it's been a really successful committee. So it highlights all of those people and the, and the roles to that. Then it does a whole section on prevention. It talks about some, some things that we do to prevent, you know, things from happening, events in our school. So from trauma-informed drills, that's a new mandate from New York State that we have to be very sensitive when we're doing these drills. It reviews our drill procedures. It reviews parent notification. That was a new change this year as well is that we have to tell families with notice when we're doing any sort of emergency drill in the school. And that's something we do district-wide. Talks about trainings and then different employee roles and who does what during any sort of event. Then there's a section on responsive law enforcement and contacts of who our law enforcement people are, who help keep us safe. And all those people are representative on our school safety team. Then it reviews our emergency response protocol. And if the board remembers, we updated that last year. There's an emergency protocol that New York State is adopting and has given us a couple of years to, to implement it. We implemented it last year. The state is looking for consistency amongst all the schools in New York on those, which I think is a really good idea. Why reinvent the wheel for all of doing, protecting kids and keeping kids safe? So that has been updated in Chatham and it talks about that. Also it talks about chain of command in an emergency situation. Who is the, who is, you know, the chain in command as we're going through? In an emergency situation, we would of course, release it to law enforcement, but the school obviously plays a really big role. Also it reviews protective options. So things like closures, school closures is an option, early dismissal, evacuations. As we talked about, as I mentioned to you throughout the year, we did practice an evacuation drill. If we had to walk to an evacuation site, we practiced that, we'll continue to practice those yearly. Then from there, it's a lot of appendices. There's, the majority of this document is appendices. So it, it highlights all of those different areas. So we, we highlight policy 8110, which is school safety plans and teams. We highlight policy 8210, which is cameras on school property, whole policy on that. We have policy 0115R, which is the student harassment and bullying prevention. Also included in this, in this whole packet is the, we did this this year, the Safety and Suicide Ideation Assessment Guidelines and Plan. So it's how we can intervene if our students are needing extra support. And also new assessment guidelines for our school staff on suicide ideation. Our staff just had a training on that, on how to use that tool and how to, and how to work through that. So that's been really successful. We have a really solid plan when it comes to that and how to really identify if, if a child is in need here in the district. Then there's also, this was a mandate back in 2020, back during good old COVID. It's called continuation of operations. The governor made a requirement that we have to have a plan to continue operations if there's a public health emergency. So that is still in there. And then there's also our school resource deputy responsibilities that's attached to this. And then our remote instruction plan, that's another mandate from the state that we have a remote instruction plan. And the state used this school safety to implement that, to attach it to it. So it's all part of it. So after the, the board approves this, we have to submit this to the state. And they have to then also approve it. And then we kind of go from there. So that's kind of the highlights of the school safety plan. Any questions from anybody in our public hearing? Questions from the board, comments? So we will, like I said, you will have this up for approval. We have 30 days. If anyone has any comments or thoughts on this, you could certainly submit it to me. And we could make any, you know, possible updates. As you can see, this is still in draft form until you approve it. Okay, that's it.
Okay, then have a motion to adjourn the district-wide meeting. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, I'd like to start the three organization meeting and start the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission, the mission of the Chadon Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with the knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate authentically, adapt, succeed in contributing in future educational career and community endeavors. Okay, be it resolved that the Board of Education appoint Deborah Pottinger as district clerk for the temp for the July 8th, 2025 organizational meeting of the Board of Education. Round motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, then the, okay, our Board of Education member that was elected is not here today, so we're gonna skip that portion.
Just, just for, just for the record here, do we currently have seven members? We just don't?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to approve the present agenda as written or amended?
Slowly.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? R1, be resolved that the Board of Education appoint Deborah Pottinger as district clerk in the Chadon Central School District for the 2025-2026 fiscal year as stipend for 330 a year. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, the superintendent will administer the oath of office to myself and then I will try to do the oath of office. So this is, and now I repeat it.
All right, so repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Okay.
Your signature. Congratulations.
Okay.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Superintendent.
Of the Office of Superintendent.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will call for the nominations of the Office of the President of the Board of Education, followed by a motion to elect the president to serve for the 25-26 fiscal year. Do I have any nominees?
I'd like to nominate Don Freeman.
Okay, that's, that is fine, yeah.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? Okay, so at this time, I will, is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, I will administer the oath of office to the newly-elected president.
You're supposed to agree, actually. Did she agree?
I agree, aye. I agree, I accept.
She's gonna read her own, so.
That's right. Okay, I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education. And the Office of President of the Board of Education. According to the best of my abilities. Okay, now the president will from this point on assume the role of the chairperson of the meeting.
Oh, we don't have the note card. Oh, you've done, you've done a couple of meetings, right?
Yeah, I'll just do the notes on here. The motion and everything?
Yes, yes, so like basically you're gonna ask the same thing that I did. You're gonna ask for a nomination for vice president.
Do we have a nomination for the election of the Vice President of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Mary Ann Piero.
Second. I accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved? So moved? Alright, so I'm gonna give you your.
You'll get it though.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
R2, be it resolved that the Board of Education establish the following standard workday for the Chadon Central Schools or employees whose titles are reported to employees' retirement system, ERS, as required by the New York State and local retirement systems effective July 1st, 2015. Motion?
Motion.
All in favor? Oh, oh, any questions? No questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Had to write them down.
Alright, so then. R3, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chadon Central School District hereby approves the terms and conditions of appointment for Hannah Barra by and between the Chadon Central School District and Hannah Barra, Public Library Director.
Backer.
Dated June 20th, 2025, authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement and authorizes the payment of monies as approved therein. Motion?
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. I have one comment. I was in the library for the first time this year. It's beautiful in there, just gotta say. It's, I, I haven't seen it that well put together in years, so I'm sure that's a group effort, but.
They, you know, it's really, all the employees are incredibly happy. Yeah, it's going really well. They're working together as a team, it's been really great.
So any opposed?
I say so moved.
Oh, so moved. All right, R4, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the MLA with CCSTA dated June 30th, 2025. Motion?
Have a motion?
See, now I'm taking over.
Second? Mary Ann. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Just a comment that it is really wonderful news that we reached this agreement with our teachers in the district. We know that we may have some tough times coming along and it's so good to know that we're one community of educators here and people on board and that we will be able to work together. But I'd like to thank the people who negotiated, Andrew, everyone for bringing this together. And from what we hear, the teachers are happy with this and that's what we want, we wanted to be.
Yeah, I, I just wanna echo that and just thank all the entire negotiation team. It was really a pleasure to work with that group. You know, it took us some time, but we came to a, a fair decision. And I just wanna, you know, it's, it's truly a partnership to, to be able to, you know, negotiate a contract. So thank you to everyone involved and thanking the teachers as well. And the TAs and the nurses.
So moved. R5, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda of July 8th, 2025 organizational meeting as written. Motion?
Second.
I got a comment. This is, I don't know how consequential it is. It certainly doesn't need to be sold today. Neither of our designated newspapers exist. Because they're both sold and those names barely even exist anymore. So at some point, we should probably update that.
So I know the register, register star was bought out, but it still comes to us as a district. That's the register star.
On paper, it does?
On paper. And so can the other one, check out, it'll be a paper?
Yeah, online, they rebranded, it's all been rebranded.
We'll check into that because it still comes to us as.
When the reporters reach out, they still go by those names.
They still go by those names?
They do, but I know the Hudson, what is it, the Hudson?
The Daily Gazette bought one of them.
And then the Hudson and something.
NYBT bought the other one.
It's what they say.
But they're both international components.
They, they do still, when, when they reach out, they say, I'm from the Columbia paper.
Okay.
So we can look into the legal name, we should look into the legal name.
If they're still saying that, it's okay. What I was concerned with is that they were gonna drop those names entirely.
It might eventually. Well, we can look into that to see what their legal name is going by, Deb. We wanna make a note of that.
Yeah.
Good question. That's it, I don't have anything hard. Other than there's a wonderful library donation in here from France, so.
I have a question about, okay, so consensus agenda, what letters does that pertain to?
So.
So that's K, but then it looks like L.
So that is K through, until.
Oh, so it didn't include the name actually.
So. So K through N, because that's the consensus agenda. And then we're gonna go right into the policy and code of ethics and we're gonna go right into our business. Okay?
So then we say the head to end.
So. Right. N is, yeah, right.
N is policy of coordinates.
N, you mean N is a Nancy? Or M is a Mary?
All of them in it.
Okay.
Yes, so then you're gonna go to N, policy code of ethics.
Page 20.
Okay.
Page 20. Got it.
Did you just, do all favor and so moved and all that kind of stuff?
Um, no. Alright, so any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
So on page 20.
Page 20, N, policy code of ethics. So R6, be it resolved that the policies and code of ethics of the Board of Education continue enforced for the current fiscal year unless duly modified. Motion?
Second.
Questions, or all in favor? Oh, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. We're so moved. Q, public comment? So. Do we read this whole thing?
Not the whole thing. This is like the first sentence.
Okay. Public comment, the purpose of public comment is for the Board of Education to hear as a whole comments that are related to agenda items and school business.
Hi, my name is Dave O'Connor. I live in the village of Chatham in the Chatham Central School District. So I was able to finally get my hands on the Questar Facilities Utilization Study that was reported out in May of 2012. It commenced on November of 2011. So over a six-month period, Questar III as the body provided three retired administrators, two superintendents, and one business official to look systematically at enrollment, building, surveys, and then meet with the superintendent, Cheryl Lou Sparrow, John Thorson, Mary Ann Barkman at the middle school in Januarino, in the elementary school. And their findings are in the report. So when you look at the thick document, there's a lot of facts in it and a lot of data, but the report itself is only 15 pages. So I know Debbie Scott a copy of this available. I would really urge board members to just scan it at least. I think the outline is here for you to have a pretty good idea of what superintendent courts going to find from a new enrollment study and a new facilities utilization. But what was missing, what we never did, and it was based upon a shortage of three to four classrooms in the high school, is we went with a capital project to add those. That was voted down by the taxpayers, then we never revisited the topic. Okay, failure on board from when I was there to now, okay? What was missing though was what can the repurposing be? There's nothing in this report where there were any meetings with community members. And I'm just gonna argue that you do not need to go systeming with the enrollment is. When this was done, enrollment for 2011 was 1,262 students. In the Columbia paper, when we got the, you know, here's why budget should be voted down, number for Chatham was 853. In this report, they used as an anticipation that enrollment would fall over the decade by 15%? Well, the way it's turned out, over 15 years, it's dropped more than 32%. So the time is right to try and move along with this expeditiously, in my opinion. I just urge the board to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, just for the record, I, I'm not sure exactly where the paper got the numbers, but we currently are at 9:05 right now, as of this moment, just so everyone knows. We did, we did go up a little bit last year, but we're at 9:05.
Any board member comments?
I would like to start off with saying, um, thank you, Don, for, I know it's customary to do two years as board president, but this is a pivotal year for my family. And when I was talking to Don about it, you know, he agreed. He said that as long as we work together, that I will just keep things rolling smoothly, but it'll give me a little bit more time to be able to address the things that are going on in my personal life, as well as still keep things, some continuity going. I, I look forward to this year. I think that we built a great team last year. Andrew's been doing a fantastic job with his team and I feel very confident and hopeful. And I think that this is gonna be a really good year of just bringing it in, bringing it home, you know, as far as getting this done to achieve our goals. And I just wanted to say thank you. For, it's, it's a lot of work, but I'll be right here. And we'll have a lot of laughs and we'll get through it. It'll be fun. But I want to thank you again.
I've got one. And I would stick this in new business, but I don't see any business on that show. We, we haven't talked about a summer workshop yet. I don't know, I'm just hoping to get any specific ideas, but we should today talk about scheduling. And the second thing that you haven't realized is a pinch yet, but you should start thinking about committees today. Because it'll become urgent at some point, even if it's at the end of the summer, but it's nice to get through that early.
So Mary, I were speaking earlier and we were gonna send out a Google form.
Okay.
And then ask for the ones for some feedback of what your interests are. And then we'll go from there. And we'll have it all established.
I did an interest form and that worked really great.
Yeah.
For retreat topics too, as well, because you could do.
Yeah, we can do that as well.
Yeah, I know, I know one thing that I talked about and I think, Mary Ann, we mentioned about, because we do have two new board members. And budget is gonna be a big topic for the next several years. Some professional development for what boards need to know about budget could be a suggestion that I would give the board for a topic of, of interest as well. I know we talked about that before.
I think that is good. And if anyone has ideas, you wanna email them, I can put them in the Google form.
Should we include goal setting in that? I know we're going to go over the priorities and what, you know, we're gonna decide to keep and, and, you know, you probably need some time to like really fine tune what, what it is that we want.
I don't feel the goal setting's super urgent, I think, but I, I'm willing to hear other opinions on this. I think we set some goals last year. We, I'm not, it's not clear to me how we're doing on them. They were such hard problems to tackle that the idea that we were gonna conquer them in a year is.
Did you see, Andrew put together a, a document?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I have a copy.
Yeah, we'll get to that on here, but yeah, it's very clear and very, it's a, a very big document.
Combine that, but my observation has been these, the, the best brain power like fades in like 90 minutes, even if you schedule like three hours. We should just front load the more important thing in the beginning. If, um, if a little bit of training on, on, um, finance is, I, I mean, really, there's some tough decisions to be making the next year or two. I think that there's not a lot of room for missteps there from the board, even when it comes to how fast we make decisions. I don't want any feedbacking because we're not informed to. I, I feel like that's a great topic of discussion. I just don't know how to do it. I know that the, it is good training, good, but not great.
We do have an obligation to get the goals in place before the end of the summer so that the faculty and staff know what to expect. So we, we do have to figure out, there's only one board meeting in August. So I, I like the idea of, of financial. I was actually gonna put it to try to be on finance committee for that very reason. I wanted to get a better understanding.
Maybe we could circulate a draft of goals.
Okay.
And then if we're gonna grade it before the workshop, we just adopt. And if we're not.
So it's not a lengthy.
So we don't spend two hours.
I agree. I agree, I agree with that. I agree. Yeah. Okay.
And when I get to my update, I'm going to set the stage for that and give you some suggestions. And my plan will be to give you some draft priorities as well, so we'll talk about that in a minute. That might help. Let you know how much time you might need.
Okay. Well, and, and it doesn't, yeah, I think what I, your comment about setting up for the next couple of years, like what's the decision-making the board has to make? Sounds like where we should be focused right now, and I really feel like even the, um, pushing on the goals is something that our, we have to just trust that our administration team is going to, is going to execute there, and they need, they need affirmation that they're running the right direction, but I feel good about the, the current direction. I, I'm, I'm not even sure financial literacy, like in terms of public, um, accounting is even what the group needs to make decisions. Um, but whatever we can, whatever we can discuss, right, about that. Even if it's just like what ifs, if we can get a feeling of what if this, what if that, to get some of that out in the air early, would be better than being surprised at it when we're confronted with that challenge. Like tabletoping, I, I think all of that would be super valuable.
I think that makes sense. Can we get an up list of the current?
So, so Mike and I can do some brainstorming about some topics, um, but if you all let us know, um, specifically budget-wise, you know, we could put stuff together. We can reach out to other experts in the field. Um, you know, NISBA is definitely has some experts in it, but also there are other experts in it as well that we could reach out to. So you let us know what you need and we're happy to put it together, you know, and we could do kind of a combination, someone outside and then some, and combined, we can put something together too, based on specifically what's happening in Chatham.
I think the combination of work, that would give us the broadest.
I think, like, we don't have a lot of choices to make, other than to represent the community. So to the extent that we're making choices, I, I mean, we're overseeing, but.
So we all understand what we're faced, just the board level, not the.
What we're faced with.
Maybe, but just as a board level, what we should know, that we may not.
What you need to, yeah.
But there, there's also a realm of, we could go this direction with community support, or that direction with community support. And our responsibility is to figure out what the community wants and then support them. So I, it's not a big range.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's what we need to, what we need to understand, what is, what is the landscape we're in.
What is that going to look like? So I think that's a real good piece that we have, because in the times we have, in the budget we have, and, and the legislation or whatever, how that's coming down, things happen sometimes more quickly, and I know we talked before about what certain implications might be for the future. But it always is helpful if people hear about it along the way, rather than all of a sudden having the whole picture put at them. So I'll be listening for that, and I know he does a really good job with it. On the goal setting, Matt, could you say once, what more, once more, what you thought might be the way we do that?
Not having read the, the summary that I always just tell them. I don't know.
I'm going to go over it.
Okay.
But I've, I've been, uh, in my board tenure, I've been through a lot of unproductive goal-setting conversations. Um, even if the administrators have really great ideas coming to us, we have a, sometimes shred them. In the road.
We're going to have, and that moving forward next year.
Yeah. So we don't, we don't need to debate it. Go ahead.
Okay. Very well.
Now, where are we?
Board comment.
Board. Cue superintendent report.
Okay.
So I'll do the, I have, so I will do the goals and priority update for the year, and we'll do that at the end of my little update. Okay, I have to say it was a wonderful end of the year. Um, you know, i- i- and I was really pleased because we were able to end the year with a faculty and staff picnic. We started a new tradition here, where we invited all staff and faculty from all three buildings, all departments, um, to come and enjoy a picnic together. The district supplied the burgers, hot dogs, and fixings, and then everyone brought sides, and all this administrator's gold, um, for everyone there. And I have to say, the, the positive comments that were emailed to me and that were said, they just, people loved it. It was a good way to bring everyone together to celebrate the school year. So we started a new Chatham tradition, it was a great way to end a really collaborative school year. And, you know, um, I, I had the privilege of, of starting a year and ending a year, my first year in Chatham, and, and I'm just so excited for the future here. We have a great team, we have great teachers, great students, great families, we're very fortunate, um, and I'm thrilled, um, to lead this district, so I look forward to that. Uh, today, I, I mentioned already that you already approved the MOA from the Chatham Central Teachers Association. I want to thank our, our negotiations team again, um, for, for really good conversations, fair conversations, um, and it was a pleasure working with everyone. So this year, just to review, um, we had, we had four contracts to negotiate. We successfully, um, agreed upon terms for the teachers, um, for CSEA and DSP. Um, and we are, we are starting the process on the, on the bus drivers. So our plan is to start that in August. Um, that is moving along, uh, we haven't sat at the table yet, but, um, the drivers are preparing, um, with their union representatives, um, that as well. So we're looking forward to finalizing that within the next couple of months as well. Um, busy summer as always, you know, summers are incredibly busy, um, in the district. It's, it's, as soon as the last day of school, we start planning for the next school year. Um, we always like to get our hiring done as soon as possible, so, um, you approved, or will be approving, um, the, the following different people. Um, you already approved an eighth-grade ELA teacher at the last meeting, you're approving a new seventh-grade ELA teacher, a new sixth-grade, um, teacher, and then also a science replacement teacher. We're in the process of interviewing for an elementary PE teacher, um, a facilities director, and then a replacement speech teacher, and also a mechanic. So those are the positions we're still working on, but being that it's still the beginning of July, we've done a lot done already, so I'm really happy for our team on that. Um, a couple of things that I'm preparing over the summer, you know, that's really important, just like the board does a retreat, I plan a retreat for our administrators. Um, this year, we're going to be going to Jiminy Peak, just to kind of change the, the view for everyone, um, using, using one of their conference spaces. Um, and we have some, some presenters coming to work with all of our administrative team, and that's our whole cabinet, um, including, you know, um, facilities, transportation, principals, um, Terry and Mike, um, you know, we have a team of about, about sixteen people that will be, will be, um, will be doing that retreat. We're also planning our new staff orientation, we don't have as large of a group as we have had last year, but it's also a really important thing. A change this year, in the past, the district just did a teacher orientation, we're going to do an all-staff orientation. Um, I, it's really important to orient, it, it to make sure we do an orientation for all of our new faculty and staff in the whole district. Um, planning our back-to-school superintendent conference days, our, and also other additional administration trainings. It's a good opportunity for our teachers to get PD over the summer. Um, I wanted to let you all know about the Smart Schools funding. I don't know if anyone's familiar with Smart Schools, I'm going to pass out a plan to everybody. So New York State, back in, I want to say two thousand and twelve, um, put together some funding for districts for technology. Um, so it's a grant program, um, that every school district was, was given money for. So back when this first came out, Chatham, um, did apply for it, um, and they used it to purchase our telephone system. So they didn't spend it all, right? So as, as we were digging this year, um, I noticed that not all the money was spent. So I met with Mike, um, and Mike Olson, IT, and we looked at our needs. So we really assessed our technology needs that we could utilize some of these funds for. So what we decided to do, um, through, you know, talking with many different people, through collaboration, we decided to replace our switches. Um, and switches, you know, what they do, it helps with our connectivity. Our switches are about ten years old or so, um, they're critical to our, our effective technologies. Without the switches, we won't have technology, we won't have internet. So our suggestion is to apply for the additional funding, um, and to purchase these switches. So we're starting the process, process, the first part of the process is creating a spending plan, which I just shared with you. Um, and then, um, we are in the process of, of, um, getting estimates. So you'll see the money on here that we're looking to spend is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars on switches. Um, they're expensive, but we do have the full funding for that. How it works is we have to pay it upfront and we get reimbursed from the state for this funding. And this is a competitive, a competitive grant, we're allotted a money per district, and we have about three hundred and eighty thousand left to spend, so we're looking to spend three hundred and sixty on that, on, on these switches. Um, so it's a great way to really support our infrastructure. So, um, we're getting a bunch of estimates on it, we've gone a couple already, that's how we got the estimate number, but we have to make sure we're getting the best price, so that's step number one. Then step number two is we have to, you know, we have to get state approval, um, kind of like you do during a, a, a capital project, so we're working through that. Um, and then we start to apply for the grant, and then we start the. Process, so this is steps in order to get the money. Any questions on Smart Schools and funding? Sure.
So we, um, we went, um, uh, out of contract through, um, Questar to acquire, um, cloud firewall to protect us during COVID. It's very expensive. Do you know, are we still on that platform?
We are still on it. We were, we were talking about, and Harrison, you might even know, um, we're talking about maybe updating that to a, a cheaper, equally as effective version, but a less expensive version? Do you want to talk about that, Harrison?
Yeah, currently we use NISCA still, but we're looking to go to a, the, our, our appliance in-house. So I, I, I'm actually concerned with that approach, um, and I, there was a specific reason why we went to a cloud, um, solution. It was to protect from attack, and if we bring the firewall back onsite, it will no longer be possible to protect from that type of attack. This was something that our internet provider couldn't protect us with, um, it took down the entire school. It was very expensive, I don't know that we need to be spending that much money, maybe, maybe it's the right amount, maybe it's not. But the reason I'm bringing it up is if there's unspent money here, I'm concerned with, um, appropriating this without first making the decision on the firewall, if we might need the same funding. So I, the last thing I would want is for us to go into like a firewall that's going to create problems for us down the line, and then oops, we spent the whatever money. Smart Schools money, so I, um, in any case, uh, just some attention there really, because I, I really, um, I think that it's, it's, that specific problem we have is unlike, that situation is unlikely to recur exactly the way it occurred, but the class of problem it represents has not gone anywhere, it's increased in prevalence.
Sure.
So.
So just, just so I'm, so the current system is a cloud base, and this, in the, if we updated to that system that we're, you know, we haven't made any decisions, we're just exploring.
But the attack that took down the entire school.
And that, and that is a, that is a, that, the new one that we're looking at would live in-house.
That's, and that's the problem, yeah.
Okay.
I, I can give you more information offline. I, I think if, if, if there's, if there's a, if there's, you know, uh, some thought that's gone into how to stop that class of problem.
Yep.
And that's reported to us, that'd be great, but.
Yeah, we can definitely.
That's a concern just based on spending, though.
Sure, sure, yeah, and before we make any decision on, you know, this is not set in stone, right? This is a, a plan, um, but we can present more information, you know, there's been no decisions made, um,
It's, it's, um.
To make a change.
Yeah, I mean, the, the firewall's, what, it's sixty thousand here, something in that range? It's, it's, it's substantial.
Yeah.
Um, and it's maybe more than we need to be spending, so, but I'm, I'm not sure that it is.
Yeah, well, we'll, I'll keep you updated on that, and we'll have Mike, you know, we'll gather more information, we can have Mike present on it.
But, but I'm all for getting rid of the other half of the stuff, they didn't replace it over the last.
Yeah, that, you know, the issue, it's all working right now, but it's getting close to its life, right? And if it goes, we, we want to be prepared, so this would be a good use of something that's a necessity, you know, to utilize, rather than having to take out of our budget. Let me go back to my notes here. Got everything. All right, now it's time to talk about goals. Pass this document, I know it, this was in your, I made a paper copy for everyone too, in case.
Share.
So just going to kind of walk through this, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail, you know, into this, because I think it's important to do that for planning purposes for next year. So the district, we spent a lot of time in the fall of last year, and we got behind on a little, a couple of things, just because I didn't start till September. Um, and, you know, so I don't think we adopted these until November, but one, one request that I would have of the board, if we could a- agree on this um, by the beginning of September, so we can hit the road running, it would, it would just help all of us in the district. So that's one request I have. So if we're unable to make a decision, we're not making any decisions on this today, but if we're unable to make a decision, or, or to kind of come to a consensus, you know, we're not, you're not necessarily approving these, it's more consensus building and working together as a team from these district goals. I would say it would be important to have additional conversation at a retreat if we're unable to do that by August. But let me kind of go through, um, my suggestion, um, we, we created some really good goals, and they're broad. My suggestion is to keep those goals, um, because I think they're really effective and they're really, you know, powerful. Um, and you're going to see, I'm going to give you a recommendation on our current priorities and some kind of, uh, suggestion on, to kind of get us thinking about, um, how we can change that to be more efficient for next year, okay? So we'll kind of go through all that. So the first one, we have a wellness goal, um, was to reestablish a district wellness committee that supports and plans interventions. So a lot of our goals this year was kind of to, to set the groundwork, was to create a process and to create a way to achieve our goals. And I feel like we did a really good job at that. So the district wellness committee is going strong, and will continue to go. Um, in my end of the year update, I said throughout the year, the committee worked in two subcommittees, a student one and the, and the faculty one. Um, both committees decided they wanted to get more information, and we did surveys, collected a lot of information for four hundred students and two hundred faculty and staff. And we've been analyzing that, and that's going to really set the stage for that work. So that priority was met, um, completely met, and you can see on the recommendation side, my recommendation is that I would create a new priority, or we would create a new priority, based on using the wellness survey results to support students and faculty-staff wellness. Um, so utilizing that, so that's not what the priority would, would read. What I'm going to do for all of you, based on your input today and based on my recommendations, I'm going to draft some priorities for you, um, in August. You'll have them in early August to kind of look at, and that way you'll have them before the meeting, so we can have a discussion about them, if you agree on them, or you want to add something. So this is kind of our, 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 the next month or so is going to be our planning time. So as you see this document, and you're thinking, oh, we should work on this, or we should add that, or this should be our new priority, give that to me, we'll kind of draft it, um, together. And then by August, we'll have a draft that you can look at, maybe make an approval, or maybe say, okay, we're good to go on those, again, we're not voting on them necessarily.
Do we vote on goals? Actually, definitely.
Forget it. We do? Okay. Eventually vote on them and we'll kind of go from there, all right? Um, it would be great if we had another meeting, I'm not recommend, I'm not requesting another board meeting, but, you know, being that we only have one, I think we can kind of work together, you know, through that as well. But that's the first goal. So my recommendation is to write a new goal, um, that's talking about using data from the survey. Uh, the next one was then, again, another setting the road, was creating a mental health support team that collaborates the outside agencies to support students' wellbeing. Um, we met this goal as well. Um, we created a group, this group met bi-monthly, we did some really great work in it. Um, I really think our counselors had an opportunity to come together and to brainstorm in that group. That's what came up with, um, our, using our twin recovery services, our Columbia suicide risk assessment. This group also designed a threat assessment groups and teams, so we, we accomplished a lot in a year in this group, I was really, really impressed. So my suggestion is to change this, this priority, but rewrite it, something to the effect of rewriting a priority based on utilizing the mental health team to evaluate the district's mental health curriculum for each building, and make needed updates based on best research practices and students' needs. We did not hone deep into the curriculum that we're using for our, our students. Every school is using something a little bit different, guidance counselors are doing it, teachers are doing it. We need to bring it all together and have a really good curriculum for mental health support interventions for our students. So my recommendation would be to focus that group on that work this year, and we would rewrite a priority to say that. Then our next priority, um, was investigate socially emotional, socially emotional screening tools, that was identify your students' needs and development. This is something that's highly recommended from the state of New York, um, that we use some sort of a screening tool on students as another way to assess. So, um, we were able to come together, um, again, in that group as well, that group did it again, that mental health group. And we looked at three socially emotional screening tools, and we invited representatives, and the group decided on one. Um, we're looking to use the holistic student assessment by pair out of, out of, um, art of, um, McLean University in Boston. Um, we're going to start doing that in grades three to twelve, starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So my suggestion is we, we kind of, since that, since we met that goal of coming up with a tool, is I would rewrite the priority based on gathering and. is I would rewrite the priority based on gathering and utilizing data from the parallelistic assessment tool and how we're going to implement our results and make changes in our school district. So we would rewrite a priority based upon the utilization of these tools and this really great data we're going to collect. Any questions on the wellness goal? And, and recommendations? Does anyone, besides what I gave you on recommendations for new priorities, can anyone think of any other priorities you would like us to work on to draft?
I'm curious, you know, when we set priorities last year, it was like a paragraph. It wasn't very long. I think that there's all sorts of opportunities to have, you know, hierarchy below that. I'm curious, how much do you see that we, it would be useful to expand that top level statement or keep it at the
You mean the goal or the priority itself?
The, the district actual statement on, on goals. I don't think we address priorities in our statement, right?
No, our goals are just higher overarching.
I guess, you know, from our perspective, in terms of your recommendations, right? Which of your recommendations would require us to change that high level board statement? And which of them are really down? Yeah.
I think, I think they purposely were written broadly so they would impact. So I don't really think there's any need to really change because I think it fits all of these. Unless anyone, as we go through, if you think otherwise. I know, I think that was the goal of writing them to keep them really broad so we can hone in on those. And if you remember last year, you guys as the board focused more on the goals, right? That was kind of, you all really crafted those and really, and then we wrote the priorities based on the needs and the goals of what the team did and which we are continuing to do. You know, these recommendations just aren't mine. The whole team, you know, looked at them and said, this is what we think, how we can dive deeper into some of this work.
I mean, we could, we didn't go through the rest of these sections yet, but I think this applies to all of them. The I think the priorities are great. And it's easy for me to agree that there was achievement on each of them. I would really love it if they were measurable.
Yeah.
There was a metric associated with each of them. So we could say we're at this or we're at that or we're
Yeah.
Last year.
These, the new goals will, will, the goals that we're going to write this year, there will be more achievement specific, kind of more smart goal-esque with, you know, that really can kind of using some more data. As you can see, most of these, there's going to be a database to it, based on the data that we have. They're going to be written more of that. And you'll see that, you know, once we craft these in August to present to you. You should see that.
An argument can be made that there is, it is measurable. They did reestablish the district wellness committee, check. They did create the mental health support team, check. They did identify a tool. So this is, as far as wellness goes, it is pretty measurable. It did happen. It was broad. It was like a foundational, but yes, going, I've seen as you're moving down the line, yes.
I apologize for not being more specific. So they're evidence, they're all evidence. By measurable, what I meant was that there's a, it doesn't need to be a number. But there's a, a metric which is either a grade or a number that would be a data point. It doesn't need to be in any case, that's why.
Yeah, you'll see that in these next ones.
I have a document that from the district called district goal setting process. And it does define what you're talking about, Matt, and calling for metrics and what have you. It's a smart goal format. But the overall, the overreaching goals that we're doing fit just the way they do. But I think what we might be looking for, it's not for you to report out everything to us, but in terms of evidence, like if the wellness committee met, it might behoove us to say the wellness committee met four times this year. So it's very specific in terms of what some of the evidence is for it. I don't know where that fits exactly, but in reading this, I think it was something Jamie McPherson did with the board from NISBA one year, not too long ago.
We've, we've touched on, on that a few times. I don't know which version of that, that is, but yeah, we've, we've talked about that a number of times.
I think it fits in terms of what we're saying, but as I said, I was just looking for information to help me understand the process. And this makes sense to me. So I, I don't think it's, I think it's what Marianne is saying, kind of what Matt is saying, we just need to figure out how to put it together. And that doesn't seem to be a big stretch. I think Andrew's recommendations will guide us into doing that.
This year was about establishing and next year, based on what has been established, we'll be on that.
Yeah. In order to, you know, what I, in my, you know, my review of the district and in order to do some of that work that we want to do, to see that improvement, we needed to set the stage. We needed to set the ability, the opportunity to do it by creating these committees, creating these groups. And then my goal, my vision is that you'll see how that's all going to kind of connect in more specific smart goals that we'll be presenting to you. So let's go to academic.
Good.
So, um, so when it comes to the, our first priority was evaluating the district's MTSS process and making needed updates. So we did that and we came to the conclusion that we needed a lot of work in that area. So we did create a framework that was presented to you. And we, you know, we also, I restructured the organization of the district administrative team where we needed to have somebody really assigned to honing in on this work because it's a really big lift. It's a really important lift. In order to have a great special education program, you have to have a really great MTSS program. We, we hired Terry and that was the beginning of it was re, you know, when I came in again, it was kind of evaluating everything. I really redesigned the position that Terry now is in. And a part of that was this goal, right? How do we do that? We need someone to oversee it. We need someone to lead that initiative. It has to be a district-wide initiative, not what was happening is they were being done individually in, in buildings. We need a district leader to do that and we have Terry. So that was part of that goal. But, um, and we also created the MTSS framework, which we needed to have that broad definition of what MTSS was, because a lot of our, our faculty and staff didn't know. So we needed to educate people and that's what we have been doing. And that's why that process was there. So we did meet that priority. I'm confident we met that priority and we set that stage, we evaluated it. We researched and we, we really set some, a good plan up for the future of MTSS. So this new product, priority will be written that's showing student progress and using data and growth to show that the MTSS process is working. So you'll be seeing some specific ways to assess that, you know, using data on MTSS and using numbers and using how many kids are MTSS? Are they moving up to different levels? So you'll see a goal written to meet that. That's my recommendation for that goal. The next section is we said utilize collective student data and find other means to gather information about our students' growth and progress so that we can meet the individual needs of our student. So, you know, what I identified is that we, we have, we have that all over the place, right? We needed somewhere to put all of our data together. We did a lot of work in, in studying different tools out there and we decided to contract with RightPath by RightReason Technology. This is going to store, organize and profile all of our student data. And this will allow teachers, administrators to analyze and see their students' data in one place. So everything's going to live in this hub. And we'll all be there. Currently are all of our 24 students' assessment data is being input into the system and then our 25s will be in there as well, once it's released. And we'll have attendance in there. We're going to have our socially emotional profile that we are going to be using as well. That data is going to be in there. We're going to have our report card grades in there. And a teacher will be able to click on their class, see everybody. They'll be able to click on individual students. Principals will be able to look at whole grades and really do some really deep diving in data. So we're going to rewrite a priority that's going to, so that priority was met. A priority, a priority will be created to demonstrate the usage and analysis of this assessment tool. So we, we need to now, we need to get teachers to use it. So this year is going to be educating people how to use it and it's going to be assessing how people are using it and analyzing it. So there will be a goal written on the utilization of it and how it's being used to really get input on student data. Then there was a, a goal on teacher leader. We have an amazing program here in Chatham called the teacher leader program and the Monday meeting program. That was another thing that I really, really honed Terry into his job description is this is another responsibility. Because there's so much you can do with teacher leaders. It's one of the best ways to really motivate your faculty and staff to empower them. But they need to be focused and they need to be led. And that's what Terry's been doing. So we met that goal. You know, we identified the program and curricular needs. But we need to hone, we need to hone kind of deeper and I'm going to talk about that. But we want to keep this priority as is. Even though we, we feel as if we met the priority, I think we need to keep working on that area. That's important. That needs to continue every year. So my recommendation is to keep that same priority. So there are additional academic priorities that we want to add. Okay. So we're going to, my recommendation is to add an academic priority on commuting Chatham CSD's curriculum instruction and assessment program with the community utilizing the website. So we are going to be designing a curriculum and assessment page on the website that's going to hold all of our scope and sequences for all of our grade level curriculums. So a parent can go on and say, this is what my kid is learning in fifth grade. This is what my kid is learning in biology. And we're going to have it all in one place, all of our assessment tools. And Terry's organizing that already as we speak, but that's going to be a goal of utilizing that and having a place where, where parents, board members, teachers can go to see what we do in Chatham academically. So that's going to be a big project. But it is something that Terry is going to be kind of leading and I'll be supporting him in it with the teacher leaders. That's a huge goal. So we're going to be adding a priority on that.
I actually really, really love that.
Yeah, yeah. That will be, and, and it's going to be a work in progress. Hopefully we'll finish it. We might take more than a year to get everything, but that's, it's a goal. An additional goal, I think it's important. I don't, I've been talking to our new special ed director on this and, and we're, we're kind of still thinking through it. But a special education goal. I think that was something we didn't have and I think that's something that we need. And so she's working on that as we speak and we'll present that to you soon. A lot of ideas on it. So we will have a special education goal that will be under academic. And then the last one, this is kind of one that is really near and dear to my heart, but working to enhance our in-district elective options that focus on career readiness and local apprenticeships. We want to start to be able to embed some, some, some higher level job trade into some of the electives. And I think that will really inspire kids and really prepare them for career readiness. So that's a goal that I want to work on as well. So those are our recommendations for priorities in academics. Does the board have any other suggestions that you want us to hone in on?
I have a suggestion, but I also have a question.
Sure.
I know that there's been some recognition internally for several years from New York State even, that Chatham's special ed needs some consideration. It's really generic. Clearly, we need some attention there. Do we have a specific, like this year we're going to yet?
So that's what we're not yet. That's what we're working on. You know, our identifi, our identification rate is very high.
That's what New York pointed out.
Very high. And we're probably, that's something that we're, we're honing in on, you know, and we got to do it slowly. So that's kind of what the discussion is, is we need to look at what we're doing and why that is. And, you know, that's why we got to figure out the wording and what that priority is going to look like. It's not easy to say we're going to identify less kids because you just never know what the kids are. It doesn't work that way. So that's a hard one to write, but it, let me tell you, it's something that is a, is a topic of interest of mine and something that I've talked to our new director that we need to, we need to really hone in on that because our numbers are much higher than the state average.
I want to surface a, a top level goal position in that. And I'll leave with you guys to all think about. I see a lot of emphasis here in academic on personalization. Through, through using data and other means. I think that's excellent. I think that we have the ability to do that in 2025 where we did not have the ability to do that in years past. So it's, of course we should be doing that.
Yeah.
Some of the some of the special education numbers are as a result of advocacy around personalization. And it's worth considering that it maybe should be the board's position that challenge support personalized education. And now that we have a language to talk about that exclusive of special education, we have this whole MTSS framework that includes the ability to address that without saying someone needs a 504, without saying they might need an IEP. It might, it might really be supportive.
And that's, and that's the goal of MTSS. They really have to go hand in hand. That's why I keep saying without a strong MTSS process, it's hard to have a strong, strong special ed process.
What I'm saying is I'm, I would be all for making that top level for saying that that is a focus of Chatham and it might get the teachers behind using the data other than for data sake. Because data literacy and teaching, usage of data and apps is one thing, but people have to want to go through them.
Yeah.
Hang it frankly, it's not fun.
Yeah. It's a lot more work to have to go through the MTSS process.
If it would be supportive for the board to address that at the top level, I
So we could actually add that to the academic goal.
I mean, that, no, I'm, I'm saying that it's broader than that. I'm saying top level. But that's my suggestion. And I think we could do, we could do anything between that and nothing. So but I'm, what I'm saying is I, we have the capability to do that. We have a whole agenda full of stuff we're already doing. It would be useful to to keep people focused on that agenda.
And one thing I'm doing too, is I'll be adding Stephanie to this table. So she's going to be presenting to you monthly, not every meeting, but she'll be here the first Monday, first Tuesday of every month. We're going to that I need, I, I don't know if I told you that, but we're going to need a staff for her and a name tag.
Hey FYI.
FYI, starting at the September meeting, she's going to be at the table for the first meeting. So she'll be here giving you regular reports. And presenting to you more, just because I think that's really, it's an important focus. So that will kind of hone in on that to have that opportunity to ask questions and her to present. You know, it's a topic that we have to be careful on. Because that, you know, it's, that's why we got to check the wording, but we will, we're going to kind of play with that one a little bit and give you a, and if you want us to be more direct on a goal like that, that's, we totally can.
Bring MTSS to the community and say, this is amazing for your children.
Yeah.
But I think we could say Chatham's goal this year is to individualize every single student's education. And that's
That's a broad enough statement.
And it, and it, every student is and I don't know what word we want to use, personalize. Well, I, I think I, I don't know if there's very language we should stay away from Andrew.
So are you saying, would that be a goal that you would want under special education?
No, I think broader.
I'm
With this right path that you're doing.
Well, I think it's bigger than academic. I think it, I mean, we have wellness as its own category, right?
And that's the paraplistic.
So would you want to, so maybe we could tweak the academic goal to add that word in it, right?
Possibly the wellness goal.
Through evidence-based rigorous programming. Yeah. If you look at the overarching goal.
I feel very strong that this stuff happens, but it's already happening. I'm less strong on how we message it. What I'm saying is when we're communicating to our community and to our internal district stakeholders. I think that the why we're doing things really matters. And if the why is reading or math, that's a small why. If the why is we want to individualize every student's outcome, that's a big why. So.
So we'll look at, we'll look at, see how we can add a little bit more to that academic goal to make that. Put that in there.
I think the wording on that has to be, they have to be cautious in what we say and, and yeah. In any district where we've watched, I've watched over the years where the special ed identification numbers have gone up. It's been to some degree, there's a lot of reasons why. But with not a complete understanding of what the steps were before, whether it was MTSS or the old child study teams. I know I went into a district where I got a, I was doing an interim director of special education and I got a child in front of me. There had been nothing done and I don't hold the teachers responsible for that exactly. It was just not understood. So with what Terry's doing with the MTSS and what Stephanie is going to do, I think we're going to be on our way toward looking to that we do provide for each student and it isn't always a special education program. It isn't always a 504 program. Those are still very much there for the students who need those. But I think we do have other things and I'm not sure how to word that, but I appreciate what Matt is saying and what we want to do for each student. But I think we have to be cautious in terms of how we word it so that the message is clear in terms of what we need.
There's a substantial stakeholder community that looks at the spending per child. And they look at those special education versus non-special education. And they say, well, why is this student getting 50,000, 70,000 this student? Fifty thousand, seventy thousand, this student's getting twenty. I want my child to have individualized whatever. And it's unfortunate. It's almost unfortunate, or maybe it is unfortunate that IEPs are called IEPs. But. It would be nice to just say we're doing that for everyone.
I believe the MTSS process is doing that. It is parsing it down to that level.
We can, we can't message that.
We're on our way, but we have a long way to go. We've identified and now we're starting to look at specifics, but it's, it's a process. And we, I think we did remarkable things over this year in identifying what the needs were. And starting to build those bridges and those that we need to do to reach everyone. So people do understand and parents are included in that for sure. But again, a process.
All right, I'm going to keep going on to fiscal.
A question, because there's not a second public comment. Just wondering if I could say one thing on the topic just covered.
Up to you.
Why don't we just take the time at the end?
All right, let's go to fiscal. So the priority was managing the phase two of the capital projects. We, we've managed. I would say we met that goal. But I would recommend that we continue that because we're not done with the project yet. So we have phase three coming up. So I wish, we would change that to managing phase three of the capital project. Because that's not going anywhere. And we, I talked about in my end of the year update what we've done, you know, meeting with our group regularly. Really proud of how we've communicated with our faculty and staff. The moving was a bear, but we did it. And we met our deadline. We were able to, and with the help of all of our teachers and administrators. Because it was really hard to empty all fifteen classrooms. In June when school wasn't even over yet, but we accomplished it. And that's a big thank you to everyone. Because don't forget, we had to, we had to allow them to demo that. So that's what they did. And I'm sure Mike will talk more about that when he gets his update. We, our other goal was ensuring staffing adequately meets the programmatic needs and fiscal realities of the district. We honed in on this very deeply and will continue to. We were able to reduce twelve positions for the 2526 school year. You know, it definitely helped the budget, but that's hard because that was twelve less positions we have this year than we had last year. We reduced five teachers, four teacher assistants and three aides. We are very fortunate that a lot of these positions, we did have to lay off one person. But many of these positions were made through resignations and retirements and a lot of them happened. After the fact, right? After we've already had to tell people they're going to lose their job. So I feel very fortunate that that worked out. We also reduced a lot of services. That we were using through the BOSIs and other places and doing that more in-house, reduced a point four network engineer, BOSIs curriculum coaching, BOSIs data analyst, analysts. Reduce some curriculum tools that weren't being utilized. Reduce BOSIs health and safety services, consolidated bus runs and reduce supply codes. So we, we did that deeply. So the recommendation is, yeah, we met our goal, but you know what? We got to do that again for the 2526. So the recommendation is to keep that as is. The other one is maintaining a strong credit rating for the new debt issuance. That's going to change. We met that goal. But we're going to be, we're going to be continuing to do a strong credit rating, but we're not, we're not issuing new debt this year, but we're going to be doing that through the budget process. So. That goal, we're recommending that we continue a goal like that, but we're going to tweak it to meet this year's needs. Questions on fiscal? So we're not proposing any additional ones. Just updating some of those.
Did we, did we find out if the building condition was surprised due in 2526?
Yep. So it's due this year. It's going to be worked on throughout this year. We also are doing an enrollment study. We're contracting out to that. We have that in the process as well, as well. So we'll have that. That will be completed, you know, beginning of this year. So we'll have both of those done, you know, within next year. And then from there, then we'll be taking that and creating a committee, you know, to analyze that. And then to really hone in on what, what the next plan is. It's going to be a big topic for the next couple of years.
You know, I. I don't even. I have no idea what the possibilities are, but I know that the state asked us to look into shared services. We did some of that work, right? Is that ongoing still?
Yeah, yeah, we've had some, Mike and I went to a couple of workshops on that at BOSIs. To see how we can, we can share with other districts. Now, we always have great ideas, all of us superintendents and business officials of making it happen.
It would be great to have one win. This year.
No, it's still a big topic. Because it's every single district is, all the small districts are looking to do that, right? So I know we met with many districts. So it's a conversation that we're continuing. So it's, it's happening, but. All right, safety. So the priority was each school building in the district will hold regular school safety committee meetings to plan and implement district-wide safety committees. That was met. Every, every building was holding a meeting. That was met, but we need to continue that, right? So that, my recommendation is that priority will stay the same because it needs to continue to happen. The district will collaborate and consult with Questar School Safety to create and implement an after extracurricular emergency procedure and protocol plan. I am sad to say, this is the only priority that at this moment, as of today and as of seven to twenty-five, that has not been met. I reached out to Questar. I put, we have a Questar specialist that I asked to work on this for us. That person has left and I haven't received anything before that person left abruptly. So I reached out to Craig Hansen to see if we can get that work that that person has been working on. Because I gave that person information and they were supposed to create something and I never received it. So. They're going through the files to see if they can find the work on that. So I can't say that this has been met. Hopefully by August, I'll, hopefully they're going to tell me, here it is. And I can say, all right. Yeah, yeah. So, so that is unfortunate, but I'll give you another update on that. So as of now, I'm going to say this is not met. And that means we're going to continue it for next year. The nice thing with Needham is they're on, they're on contracts. So. I can say, you know, to Needham and ask them to help us with this for next year if this is, if Questar has not. You know, been able to accomplish what we asked them to. So that was what I would do because this is a project I can't do alone. We need, we need help with that. This is a big project. One thing that we, another goal was to establish a comprehensive school threat assessment team. That, that was something that I noticed that the district did not have. If there's a significant threat, what we do. The priority has been met. I'm really proud of that. We have some really good teams district building wide and then also district wide and Needham was amazing in helping us create those. Now that, so my, so the priority has been met, but we, I would like another goal on this because now that the teams have been formed. And the tools have been created, we need to work better on the communication with all teachers and staff regarding our threat assessment process. So this is more of a communication and kind of working through with everybody. All of our teams know about it, but what I realized as I was really assessing this. Is that we didn't do a good job educating the other teachers and staff about how to utilize it as well. They need to be educated on it. So even though we created it, now we have to do a better job of making sure everyone knows about it. So that will be my priority written on that one. So my plan is, is in August, when I get back from vacation. Is to hone in on these recommendations that I gave you. I'm going to draft, you're going to see. A new twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, sheet on this. And I'm going to have a draft priorities on here and I'll, and I'll share them with you before our next meeting, which is on the nineteenth. And then we can kind of communicate back for feedback on it. And then we can have something kind of still in draft form, but that we can discuss and go through at our August nineteenth meeting. Possibly, maybe we can say these are good. We want to move forward on them after a couple tweaks. My recommendation is if we're sitting here saying we need more time to hone in on these a little bit more, then I would recommend us scheduling a. Whatever you want to call it, a small retreat or just maybe an hour that we all can come together again. To kind of talk through these if we need more time.
If there is a way that we could come together and talk about them, I think it would be beneficial. It's not that there's any changes, but we have two of the board members who aren't here. This is going to be extremely new, I think, to them. And. Find that time just to talk it through. I don't have any problems with what's here, but.
Yeah, you know, if you want to, we can schedule something in August before the nineteenth meeting and that way we can be confident to say, all right, we're going to prove these on August nineteenth. I, I just need a little bit of time after vacation to put my priorities in place, but early August I'll have those ready for you. So.
We should have, and you've said it several times, like, you know, I'm hearing you say these really need to be in place.
Yeah. What I would like to do at my welcome back. I want to share, like my vision is to share these at the welcome back. This is what we're working on here in Chatham to have them ready for September second. That's what I, if it can't happen, that's fine, you know, but. It's a good opportunity when everyone's together. Do you want maybe Deb to do like a little survey to everyone on a couple of dates in early August?
I think we should, just based on past experience, we should circulate availability right now, even though we don't have everyone. And circle some dates and let them.
Since you don't have a meeting on the second Tuesday. Oh, the first Tuesday comes on August the ninth, the fifth. That would, for me personally. That would be the best option because. Traveling a lot in the chicken, so.
I'm good with the fifth of, you know, I don't know what you want to call that. Would that be a meeting? Could we do it as a retreat? What, what do you think, Deb? What was that?
It depends on what, what you're actually doing. So could we call it special? Special workshop, a new workshop.
Because we're not voting on it on that meeting.
No, we're not doing anything.
No.
The work session, a work session.
At that number, we're going to have to, in that, around that time, we're going to have to adopt a tax warrant. So we have a very brief meeting and that would probably be that time. It's around the fifth.
So we could have a special meeting.
So that could probably.
But that wouldn't be too late for you?
Well, it's just the ones I, when I get the final number. So that's around the time I usually do it. So we could tie it in if it's possible.
You think, you think, what do you think the odds of our having it by the fifth are?
Pretty good.
Okay.
Well, should we do a backup date?
You could do, you know, could we do that Thursday? Give us a couple more days, the seven?
I can't do Thursday. I can do the following week.
But we also don't know if Steve and Andy.
That's why we should.
So you could put that document with a couple of dates in there and then we'll just see.
So do the fifth and maybe, and maybe then how about the next Tuesday? The twelfth, is that too late?
I may not be there on the twelfth. I could do the nineteenth, but that's getting.
Nineteenth is, we already have a meeting on the nineteenth.
Well, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday. We could do.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
We could do the sixth event, maybe if that works for other people.
I could do, I could do any night that week.
So maybe do a couple of days that week.
And if, if we have a board member that's out of town, that'll be a problem, but.
Like the both of our board members that are not here, they both are, I don't know, maybe they have more than one vacation. They're on vacation today. That's why they're not here. So maybe they'll be here.
Well. Okay, we could start with that and see where we.
Yeah, let's start with that week. And then we, we would have to do a special meeting in case we wanted to. And I will have a draft to before that meeting.
And format. How long do you guys want to meet for? While we're doing just goals, are we trying to do?
The only other thing would be the tax warrant, but I wouldn't put anything else in there.
I would just say one hour should be sufficient.
Especially if I give you guys, if I give you like. My goal is to give you, you're going to have a draft.
I will be so happy if it's an hour.
Well, if we, if we do our homework and show up prepared.
You're going to have a draft. Ahead of, you know, a couple, a couple of days ahead of time, not, not a time.
You'll get a raise next year if that happens.
Realistically, if it's not going to be an hour.
I think everyone should be there for this, but it.
You can.
You will receive the document and then if you have comments that you wanted to add and then.
Yeah, I'll email the document ahead of time and you can, you can just give it to Deb.
Yes. So right now I've got the fifth and the sixth. An hour and a half.
Plan an hour.
If it goes over. Plan an hour with our.
Are, are we going to go at six?
Or earlier?
Six is easy because we already can do it at six.
I'm good anytime. You could do five thirty, you can do, I'm here.
Oh, that's true. That's right. You're, you're here all day.
Doesn't matter to me.
Why don't you throw the thirteenth and fourteenth on there just for fun, just to see if Steve or.
Just for kids. Six o'clock.
Yes. But we'll have it in advance. We should all do our homework now. Have our comments somewhat prepared. So we're not walking and reading it line by line here. That's, that's where.
And you'll be getting it in this format?
Yep.
You know, without the, without the updates. Hey, that's all I had for my update. I was wrong enough.
Thank you. You might be, okay, because I did. Because I did, I, well, I knew what to say, but because we don't have a second comment on here. I didn't know if you guys wanted to have one. I think it was just a template that was used from last year and now you probably do realize. And now more than I, so. I think it's good to have it on there. Okay, so then what I would do is I'd be interested in sharing, ask them. So I would also ask them to come to that. So then for calendar, do I read anything or do you just say?
I can give you an update on that real quick. So the only thing that we included, I don't think I brought. We added. So in. Yeah, yeah, board meetings are in there. We put everything in there. But the change from last, and the reason we have a new version of this is because in negotiations for a lot of our bargain units, we added. We closed the buildings for Christmas Eve. So that was changed on here. It was just, Christmas Eve was always in there, but it was tweaked. It's now a paid holiday for everybody. So. That's the only change. And the other changes, also in negotiations that you approved today. There are give back days for snow days. There are four now instead of one. So those days that we're going to be giving back are posted in there. So families kind of could have a forewarning that we might not have school on those days if there's no snow days. So that was the addition that, that you're approving today. And we did, and what I did on those is we did two in May. Two, two around the Memorial Day. One on April break. And then one on May first. So I didn't want to do them all together because that just is a lot of time not being in school.
And we'll see if the governor's office ever changes the definition of some days.
Well, we call them emergency days.
Right.
They're called emergency.
Discussion a few years back that maybe those. Yeah, during COVID, it was like, do we really need these schools?
Well, because of, yeah, yeah, remote work. But they kind of got off that. That's not, no one's, no one's really doing that.
So academic update.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things to share with you. The one thing I wanted to share was a survey that I sent out at the MED. Focused around CKLA, the reading program. I know the district started that purchase process, I think it was three years ago now. So. Coming in, I just wanted basically to know how was it going because I visit classrooms and you talk to people and you get. Snippets and comments and this and that. So it was a, it was a ten question. Survey completely open-ended. I'll, I won't read the whole thing to you, but touched on. Your thoughts on if it offers a clear scope and sequence across grade levels. How easy or difficult was it to implement in your classroom? Does it help to identify students who are struggling or excelling? Does it integrate writing along with reading and how, how often do students have the opportunity to write about what they're reading? What changes have you observed in your students' reading abilities? So fluency and comprehension and. Multitude are different. They could really go anywhere they wanted to, vocabulary. Since CKLA came in, what are the biggest benefits of using CKLA? What are the biggest challenges? Spill this one in there. Based on your experience, what advice would you give to a school that was considering adopting CKLA? Figure that would be interesting. So. Sharing this with Andrew, we're just going through, sent it out, over fifteen replies, which is. If you think about our, our number of classrooms, really good. A number of the teachers thanked me for sending it out. I think they wanted to. Share thoughts. So going through that, more to come on all that. But I just wanted you to know that. There, there's a lot of programs out there. There's a lot of, you know, they even were referring a couple of years ago to like the reading wars and I mean, this whole. It's been super controversial and kind of an interesting world. So I wanted to hear back from the teachers. So going through that. So, um, I wanted to hear back from the, the teachers. So going through that, some more to come on it, but I just want to share that, that did go out.
And this is kind of setting the stages for if we're gonna be exploring other programs, right? So this is part of the data collection.
I think that's great. It's nice to get their feedbacks there in the trenches.
Yep, yep. And it, it's so fascinating to hear from different people, same grade level, different grade level. It's just interesting to.
And it was good to keep it open-ended instead of just check boxes?
Yeah, it wasn't a Likert scale, it wasn't a five or one. It was, they could pretty much go wherever they wanted to. So, and they were very, you know, shout out to the teachers. They were very thoughtful. I think they put a lot into it and, and I, I'm pretty candid, be honest and, so you know, report on what you're seeing. So.
I'm excited for those results.
Nah, it's, uh, it's interesting so far.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Um, another quick update, the, uh, so the teacher leader, I know I mentioned this to you, um, one of their responsibilities as teacher leaders to work one day over the summer. It's included in that position. So gave them three days. They, they could pick one of them, um, June 30th, July 21st, and August 18th. We all know how hard it is to pick a date, so with 27 people, I figured I'll, you know, give them some options. The first one was, like I just said, on June 30th, 15 of the teacher leaders came and it was a, it was a great day. We talked about roles, responsibilities, challenges. We talked deeply about, um, setting SMART goals. And so I'm asking you to the teacher leaders to add a SMART goal this year for their team. I think that went really well and I think we got empowering them with their team to, to write this goal. And, um, you know, and Matt appreciated the whole thing with the metrics as we talked about what, I mean, time bound and having it's gotta be able to be measured. And so there's just a really good discussion, you know, that, where they're headed. So, um, general will continue with that and by September, once they meet back with their teams, we'll have these goals set. So it's really good. Um, looking forward to the next two days. The administrators were invited to pop in. They, you know, people were here that they did and we'll do that throughout the summer. So just a really, really positive, good day. And, um, I appreciate the teacher leaders in all, um, that they do. Like Andrew said earlier, it's a great, I tell you, when I share this with other districts that we have, they're, we are the envy of a lot of school districts because they just don't have this. Uh, my teacher leaders, but I, I think we have a very rich program and, uh, just going along.
It's a unique structure. They're really having a Monday, you know, it's a trash walk.
Well, they're very collaborative. I think that's another benefit of meeting over the summer. You know, you're, it's, you have a little, a little catch grab and discussions and so it's good.
That's great.
The summer curriculum writing projects that, um, you all approved toward the tour goes, um, recently and, uh, they're off and running. So, um, three have already completed, did a great job, and three more are happening this week. I've been meeting with, with each team a couple of times and then they are bringing their final kind of artifacts and what they did and we're talking about that. The principals are involved in these discussions too. Uh, I just want to say it's a, what a great opportunity. It is, um, you know, you're always trying to, as a teacher, to better your curriculum and do research, but when you have that time and, you know, how precious the fiscal goals are, but it's so, again, it's a, it's a, I don't know, treat, is that the right word I want to say? But Pete, the teachers super appreciate it and, um, it's really good work that's coming out of it. So, and that is continuing on summer though. I have been right up to the last week in August. So, anyway, it's, uh, there's a buzz to it, which I think is good. So it's good, it's done. And I wanted to just share with you at the next board meeting, um, for my academic update, how I'll present all the, uh, data that we have available. So the IREDDI data, um, I can show you K, or K8, I can show for reading, um, math, and I'll show you the goal of school, grade level, how we did. And focusing on, on growth, on how, you know, how much the kids have moved along those tangents down there, the, the lines. Um, and from the high school perspective, uh, you know, the region's data is, is in and being finalized now. Unfortunately, the region's data statewide where you can kind of see where you fall isn't available. It's around the same time, the 3-3-8. That's why we presented that way. And I know it drives everybody crazy that we have to wait so long. You know, same with like the nicest line, I know I talked about that. We don't usually get that till September. It's just, you know, you wanna, like, you know, you want this wooden tool open so you can talk about these things. But, um, on the 19th, I will, uh, you know, shoot the high school data too, besides the region's final, final grades, final exam. So there's a, so going through that now, working with the principals on that too. So I have a whole, my update will be focused on that in August. Um, and I think that's it. Any questions?
I know that's great.
Uh, when you're, uh, presenting the IREDDI data.
Yep.
I love to see, um, not how far they moved from the beginning of the year, but adjusted for the fact that there was a whole year. So if they were a year, you know, if they're two grades behind the last year and this year they're one grade behind, that's actually like, it's two, they, they progressed two grades in one year. That's what that shows. So if there's some way that we can see the data that way, rather than seeing from the beginning of the year, the end of the year, which I don't think is as useful.
Make that clear to me.
So what's important to me is a child's relative baseline in the year that they're in at the moment that that measure is taken. Not the, they were like a grade level behind at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year they were on grade level. That doesn't mean anything. All that means is they did a normal kid thing, which they learned stuff in that grade. So if they were, you know, in, in fourth grade, right, they were two grades behind, right? And in fifth grade, they're one grade behind. The measure of that child is actually that they completed two grades worth of academic progress in one year. And that would be the thing that I want to see. Um, which is, I know by default, what IREDDI shows you is this view of like, it assesses the child as if they're at the end of the year. Where are they in terms of grade behind? I, I just don't think that that's a useful longitudinal measure. It tells the teacher what they need to know to get the child to the end of the year, but it doesn't tell us what we need to know to understand how the program's operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Um, operational.
So to start with, um, I'd like to congratulate Andrew on a great first year. Um, I've done this 20 years, a lot of superintendents, and this was a huge transition year, especially with some key hires, Terry being one of them, who's just done it, you know, he's done a great job. And we had a special ed director Stephanie we hired and we had teachers and we had tough negoti, uh, tough, you know, four, four negotiations. We did three. We had a tough budget year, capital projects, so tons of stuff. But I think just built a great foundation. Um, I'm happy with, it's a great team moving forward and I'm happy the board supports. I just want to, you know, I just want to see what's, you know, I thought it was a wonderful year and a lot of things happened, so she went over the goals. So start with that one. And, uh, just a couple of things I have. So, you know, the big thing, we're, we're hiring for facilities director. It's a huge position, obviously. Um, so we're working through that. Hopefully we'll have someone on soon. Um, and so I've been filling in on the, uh, for the capital projects. Um, we have Dan from Collier. He's a new person in Albany. I've been really happy with what he's been doing. He's been here every day. He has 7:30 meetings, just the brief meetings to go through any issues. He has timelines because this is a huge project. So I've been trying to go to some of those. I go see him daily. Um, I've been really happy with the start. We've really gotten a lot of the rooms and the renovation and, you know, we'll give updates and pictures as we move along, uh, as, you know, other board meetings and reports. But, uh, we walked through today and there, there's been a tremendous amount of work done, um, but we still have a long way to go. So we're gonna have to keep pushing on it. So I will be attending. I, I see him daily and I'll be going to those meetings. I'll be heavily involved because, you know, until we get someone, but obviously they'll still be involved going forward. So, um, very.
He's been great.
Yeah, happy with the progress and what he's done and it's great to have him here. And, you know, I, I feel like we're, we're really moving in the right direction. Um, and then we had a bus mechanics, you know, we have two. We have to hire, uh, we have one and we're working on another one. I hope we're close with another one because that's, we have to have those. So, you know, that's really where I've been. Um, library, I'm just, just gonna say it's been wonderful. Um, now with Hannah Weekly, uh, how big the environment, the positivity, it's just, it's just great to see. So that's moving in the right direction. And Wally is moving along. He's learning. There's a lot to learn. Steve's helping. Um, they're trying to help out there too. So we are moving in the right direction, but we'll be, you know, heavily involved with capital projects and updates. We just, you know, where we're going. Uh, that's really all I have tonight.
Great.
All of those people for transportation, facilities, library. How's our staging going for the summer? Are we on target still of whether we can get books to get done? Is actually gonna get done?
Yeah, yeah, right now. I mean, like I said, we're gonna, we'll give updates as we go, but we're, we are, and we got an end date and we got it all kind of mapped out where we need to be. So, but, you know, we're gonna have to be.
Good luck with materials and people.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, but, yeah, but, you know, we need to get there. So we'll get there.
Instruction. I just had one, um, we have to think about football coming up in August and that one road that they used to go into, or they would park behind the gym. Will they have access to the gymnasium when football practices start?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna arrange all that. I want them, you know, they're actually doing some work in the workout room. Cause I know sometimes we use that over the summer, but that should be, uh, buttoned up in about a week. So we're, we're gonna have to delineate how to get in and do that, but we want to be able to run our program, you know, run our programs in the forward.
The, they won't be able to use the gymnasium, but they'll have access to the, to the weight room and access to the locker room.
Right, right. And, you know, and that driveway to the right of, you know, here at the MED, it's gonna be utilized, heavily utilized because that's where a lot of them park.
So we'll, we'll give everyone, you know, once we see where we are, when that time comes, we'll give everyone specific directions on how to access everything. There will be amendments along the way.
Starting to think about it. And now the added wrinkle of like communicating with the Ichabod, um, people too, to make sure it's kind of a smooth, it's a safe, hard planet.
So during the last capital project, I thought we blocked out that whole area because we had giant tractors driving through and stuff and.
We just have to communicate.
Yeah, it, it depends on, you know, right now, all of the stuff is kind of towards the back and the side. So once we get to that point, we'll, we'll be giving direction on that. But yeah, we were aware.
Are they doing a camp here or are they gonna hold that at Ichabod?
So they can hold it here, but I don't know if, I haven't heard if they are or not. You know, we can make arrangements to make that happen, but I'm not sure where they decided.
Here's realizing, hey, wait a minute, this is coming up.
I'm not sure where they decided to hold it.
Okay. The only other question, I know they did the treatment on the soccer field.
That's correct.
When did we know kind of the results?
That'll take time. So, so that went well. Uh, we cordoned off everything with ropes. I put a ton of signs up. And I want to thank Richie Craft. He went out there and worked with the guy and he helped set up the ropes with me and we put signs and we closed the football. It's 24 hours. You can't be on it. Um, so that went well, but you're right. You know, this is something we're gonna see. And then we'll make sure we overseed and air aided and, and water this, you know, really try to get that to, to look good and work.
And so potentially we'll see some improvement possibly.
I'm hoping, right?
It, it's, it's worth noting that the middle school field was a disaster six years ago and it's not right now. It's, it's pretty good. It's at least flat. It just didn't, we didn't have the same luck, you know, in high school.
But the key in all of that is, is following through. It's not just the treatment. It's following through now with the overseeding and the, you know, the watering and the fertilizing. We have a schedule and, you know, I'll make sure that the guys follow that schedule. It's, I want, I want to see that field step better.
I know that you're committed to that. We've been talking about this for years. It's just unfortunate that it's falling on your shoulders now. Um, so I know we appreciate your.
So what we had to do, what you have to do for this.
Well, that has to go through central service then.
Yeah, yeah, it's your service. So they, they canvass. So we, we don't have a choice. You know, we can't post. They post.
Yeah.
They, you know, canvass and we have, they sent us five people.
So old business? My microphone's not working.
It's just the gate's turned down. It is, it is registering. We just don't hear it in here. So it's on the recording.
Oh, okay. All right. Old business?
Code of conduct.
Sorry, read this right here.
No, just, it's, it's just, uh.
Page 22, um, just, is there any, anyone want to have any discussion on the code of conduct that I presented last week?
Did you have any concerns?
I just saw, I have my answers somewhere. I saw one thing that was. Whether that should be, um, it was inappropriate sexual activity and whether we should have added public to that. That was the question. Um, and also it seemed to be in a strange place, but I'm not wedded to changing it or anything.
So we took the word public off, like, right? Is that what it was? And we just said, I believe that's.
Yes.
And that was.
Yeah, it's, really, the code of conduct is our overreaching, um, you know, policy on that. But the, especially when we get to the cell phone use and what have you, it's the handbooks that the administrators use in the building. It's going to spell out what actually happens there. And that's the purview, I think, of the administration to do that. So I know we're gonna look at the cell phone too, but, um, I didn't have any real issue with that. It was just a couple of notes. And I think there was a repeat on one of the map that you pointed out and it's, and the new, uh, the new copy, that's not there anymore. So that was taken care of.
So the plan is, is that, you know, we wanted, just to see if there's any other thoughts, ideas on it, and you will be approving that in the August meeting.
Student impersonal electronic devices.
Did we have any comments last time?
No.
I think we were pretty straightforward.
We were pretty straightforward.
Yeah, just, just.
Were made.
The process, the process was a little different on this one because there's a new mandate on it. So, um, the policy committee, just to remind everyone, did a draft of it. Um, I did a stakeholder committee, um, with parents, teachers, students, um, outside of the policy committee. They gave a lot of feedback. We gave it back to the policy committee. They made adjustments. We met again. Um, and then the policy committee presented what you have there in the first read. So I went through a few different cycles that most policies don't go through because there's a new mandate on that one. Um, and that's what we came up with. Um, the plan is, is if you approve this tonight, um, what I'll do is I'll be sending out information about it and they'll get a copy of the policy, but yet we'll, we'll kind of write it in a different format too, just telling people what the plan is when their kids return, um, in, in August or in September. And that will go out in August.
This is way too late. But I had a, I don't know why I didn't notice this last time. It, um, I saw that there was an exemption written for translation services, which makes sense, but it's under 504 and IEP. And my understanding was children, um, who are English language learners aren't necessarily on an IEP or 504.
It should be for E and L, EOL students as well.
Also says, or were required by law.
Oh, it's, well.
No, I think we missed it. We missed it. So I, I guess I'm just pointing that out if there's a problem with the policy. So.
Well, let me, um, Linda, do you have the, do you have your notes? I don't have my.
I didn't, I didn't realize.
The state law, do you have the state law on you? I can go run to my office and grab it. Of what it, how it reads when it comes to the exemption, because that came from the state.
I think, yeah, number two.
I feel like.
Actually says for translation services. So I think that covers that. And, you know, the title says IEP, comma, 504, comma, were required by law. But when it's listed out, there are three specific cases in there and number two is.
Or were required by law, but that's not the same thing as. No, I, I, um. I mean, I, I know that we have, um, yeah, the ability for the academic team to say this, this is, this has an academic purpose, right?
So if you read that final sentence there, it says additionally, the district permits the use of internet-enabled devices in the event of an emergency and under the following circumstances. One, where necessary to manage a student's healthcare, gives examples. Two, for translation services.
Yeah.
So I think that covers that.
Yep, no, that covers that. Yep.
So maybe the title looks misleading. So maybe the title looks misleading, but if you actually read the paragraph.
In reading the law, it says that there can be authorit- you have you have to have a. So what the committee talked about is there would be a a group that would, you would make a request, you know, based on necessity.
As long as it's, as long as the district designates that it's that it's possible.
Yeah, yeah. And in those cases too, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be utilizing cell phones for those. We would, we give those students a iPad. So they're gonna have a device anyways, you know, that will be better than a phone anyways, a larger device. So every student that needs translation gets a iPad from the district. And that's allowed. So it really won't. But yes, that is allowed for translation services. So technically, if a kid, say, if a kid didn't have access to a district device, they could use your cell phone for that.
Okay, motion to adopt policy five six nine five.
Motion.
R seven, be it resolved at the Board of Education, adopt policy five six nine five. Motion. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Business consensus. Are a be it resolved at the Board of Education, accept the consensus agenda as through you the July eighth, two thousand twenty five business meeting has been.
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Would anyone like to speak?
We're looking at you.
You can still speak about it.
Okay, so there's no need for a technical session. So then we adjourn? And after your motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Shock.
Do we have a student rep yet?
We do. We do.
So this the student's not available till September. They're away for the.
I wonder if they decided.
Yes, yes. Yep, yep. But they'll be here September and not the other day.
There's no reason that they.
So Jayden Blair, she's a current eleventh.
All right. So Jayden Blair, who's a current eleventh grader, she's she was selected by the student government in May or so as the new board representative. It was a very, it was a good, we had a couple of very good candidates, but Jayden stood out. She had very good credentials and had seemed very well rounded as a candidate for a board representative. So I think you guys are gonna look forward to working with her. She's a good person. I've spoken with her a little bit about the representative position, and she seems, she seems very well equipped to handle the position. So look forward to it.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Now you get to bang the gavel.